I mean, how can the message? It is being live streamed. It is. I just saw it. Those are just setting us. We are now recording and we are live streaming. I'm gonna call us to order six oh two. Welcome, everybody. And. Welcome. John, can you hear us okay? John? Okay, John is on um on Zoom tonight. Okay, so let's start. Brian, do you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Constitution, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, okay, I'm gonna move on to commendations. Does anyone have any commendations?
I'd like I'd like to make one.
Okay, go ahead, John.
I just didn't I didn't know if any of the school committee members um.
Actually, hey, John, hang on one second. We can't hear you. Can we turn the sound up? Just one second. Okay, try it again, John.
Can you hear me now?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, um, I'd just like to um commend both Lisa Dimir and Melissa Aqua Viva in our admin office. Um, there's been some shifts in personnel and I just wanted to recognize the fact that they've done yeoman's work um over the last several weeks to try to um continue to move us forward and to make sure that things are operating smoothly in our office and I just wanted to take time to recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to both those folks. Appreciate it. Sarah, did you have a comment?
Yes.
Um, we, okay. Um, all right, well, I was.
Okay, go ahead. Um, I wanted to make a commendation to Jeff St. George.
We can't, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I I would like to make a commendation to Jeff St. George, who has served for many, many years as a member of our facilities subcommittee. Um, Jeff unfortunately um passed away earlier this week, but he has been tirelessly committed and donated countless hours to serving the Marblehead Public Schools. Um, going all the way back to uh the Gary feasibility study and the Gary Statement of Interest. Uh, he was involved i- as a key member of that process and has donated hours developing the, what was the belt, organic garden, as well as a tremendous amount of other volunteer efforts. So I just wanted to commend Jeff again for his years of service and um, thank you.
Um, if it's the will of the committee, I can forward whatever. Please. For his volunteer work, thank you. Okay, um, any other commendations? Uh, public comments? Maybe not the public comment.
Mary Carison, Plan for Thrive. Um, I was thinking about the last meeting when we were speaking about the flag and Mrs. Dubois said that she doesn't um, she's not defined by the flag. But does that really have to take down the American flag? Because she says she is not defined by a flag. We're all defined by the American flag. The town flag, the magicians. Lynn is the bulldogs. But Lenny goes classical is the land. So we all kind of identify with flags that we see. With everything that's going on in this world today, our kids deserve to feel as though they are accepted, heard, and listened. And while we've seen over the last couple of years, they haven't been heard. And I really think that you guys really need to put it up to the kids, let the kids do it, because they're the ones that have to go to school every day. They're the ones that are being terrified of the teachers to go out into the world in a world that's diverse. Not ninety-seven percent white. All straight. So if it takes a flag and we see the first cancer flag, that is associated with breast cancer, so people can identify. Not everybody's a class monitor, but in my family, my mother, my aunt, my grandmother, my niece. Autistic. I have a few friends who have uh kids with autism and they like seeing the flag. And don't eat for Down Syndrome. Uh, do different color socks or something. And I spoke to the CEO of uh, we have to be very, very good friends. And she told me, keep fighting because these kids need to be accepted and know it when they walk into a room.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else here? In the room for public comment? Okay, and I don't see anybody's hand raised. You do want to make public comment and you are on Zoom, there should be a little icon at the bottom to raise to raise hand if you would like to speak. You can raise your hand. I can call on you. I don't see anybody. Give it another second. Okay, uh, whoop, I've got a mic. Help it. Hey, Mike. I'm going to unmute you. Okay, like you should you should be able to hear you.
Hi, so. I know.
Just give us your name and address, please.
I'm sorry. Michael Kalpin, Sa- Seven Sapphire Ave. Um. I know there's some, will be some discussion about the roof later for the high school. And being in construction, you know, I am a little confused on why we would borrow on a thirty-year bond for a roof replacement that the current one's only lasted twenty years. So is it a different product we're we're gonna be using for a new roof or, you know, what is the life expectancy of whatever product we're replacing it with? And and it just seems like there's a lot of missing information, at least not being shared on this topic in my regards. That's all.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, we don't normally respond to public comment, but I will say um we are, we have this agenda item later on in the meeting for an update. Uh, it will probably not include the financing financing part of that. Um, and I can reach out to Mike offline. Um, I don't have your contact information. Maybe you can give it to me in the chat and I can reach out to you or I can have the facilities subcommittee reach out to you and answer your question. So thank you.
Thank you. Touch on a broad answer.
While we get to it, okay, okay. All right, so uh, okay, so we will touch on that broadly. Mike, are able to stay on and if not, this is reporting or again, we can follow up with you afterwards. Appreciate it. Okay, um, student rep- oh, actually, anybody else looking to speak? I do not see any other hands. Again, if you would like to speak, there's a raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. Don't see anybody. Okay, I'm gonna move on then. Thanks, everyone. Um, Ella, welcome. Student Representative Ella Fendetto, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Senior project is beginning. Seniors can get their folders in the main office. The folders and all required signatures are due February fourteenth. There are two senior nights tonight. The swim and dive team senior night just happened at five forty-five and the gymnastics team has theirs at seven. There's a best buddies pizza dinner at six thirty this Friday and then they will be attending the basketball game at seven and they will play at halftime, which is super exciting. The boys hockey team is ranked third in the MIAA power rankings. The two a cappella groups, Jewel Tones and Luminescence, will be attending the New England Voices competition this weekend in Plymouth, which is their first competition of the season. And Marblehead High School is hosting Seal of By Literacy tests in April twenty twenty-five, which is super exciting because it's a great opportunity to run a Massachusetts Seal of By Literacy in any language and you can put it on your resume, which it's super helpful for jobs where you might need another language. And students can sign up through their world language teacher if they're interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. David. Thanks. Um, okay, we're gonna move on to district updates. Superintendent Robbin.
Yes, can you hear me still?
We can.
Excellent. Uh, good evening. I wanted to first thank our facilities and maintenance crew for ensuring that our school lots and walkways have been cleaned and salted during the uh two snowfalls that we've had so far this season. Um, it was great that this last snowfall landed on the holiday as it would have been a little tricky um in regard to calling a snow day or not. Um, so I was glad for that. Uh, timing of inclement weather and accurate reporting can be tricky business and I learned a long time ago that calling a snow day is always a lose-lose endeavor and as I will never make everybody happy with the decision. I want to be clear to folks, though, that when I I will always err on the side of um caution for student, staff, parents, and community partners' safety when it comes to cancellation or adjustment of school day due to weather. So we're gonna knock on wood that we won't have to worry about that this year, but if we do, um, just want to be very clear that I try to err on the side of caution as 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 best I can. Um, in upcoming school committee meetings, we will be featuring school spotlights. We talked about this earlier on in the school year. Um, these spotlights will, for the most part, uh, be highlighting ways that each of our schools have incorporated student voice into their operations. This is an initiative that I began when I came on board as a way to ensure that students feel a sense of belonging and to increase their capacity in decision-making process to the extent it makes sense in school governance. I'm excited to hear from students and for community, for the community to experience some of the positivity that's transpiring. So more to follow um as those um spotlights get scheduled into the school committee meetings. Um, we are in that part of the school year where we're past the holidays. It could focus on the solid stretch of instructional days ahead. This period of time truly sets the stage for upcoming transition activities in the spring. It is an important time for student engagement and assessing where they stand at this time of the year. Collaboration between school and home becomes especially important so that we can work together to address any academic or social-emotional issues that may have arisen at this point in the school year. We are also in the midst of budget discussion and planning. The collaboration with the town has been outstanding and I believe unprecedented. Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations Mike Piffling has done a great job of meeting with and planning together with Lisa Be- Alicia Benjamin, the select board and members of the FinCom, in order to develop ways to meaningfully collaborate with the town. I'm confident that this approach will yield um positive results as we move forward. We are hopeful that as we move toward presentation of the proposed budget, feedback and input will be meaningful and assist in the process of reaching our intended budgetary goals and in ensuring that we are moving forward with transparency and fiduciary responsibility. So stay tuned for meetings. There'll be forthcoming for budgetary planning will be presented and discussed. There's been a lot of questions about that, so I just wanted to share kind of where we are in the process. Um, our athletic update from our A D Kent Wheeler and uh Kent Wheeler and Assistant A D Mark Termi Army, sorry, is as follows. Um, Ella already mentioned the power ranking of the boys hockey is uh MIAA power ranking, they're number three, by the record of nine, one, and one. Girls hockey is three, six, and oh. Boys basketball is currently at five and four. Girls basketball eight and two. Swim and dive is four and four and oh. Wrestling, seven and four. Gymnastics, two and three. Boys track, four, two, and oh. Girls track, five, oh, and one. The boys ski team ranks second out of twelve Mass Bay Ski League East teams and the girls ski team ranked third out of twelve Mass Bay Ski League East teams. Our wins are forty-seven and losses twenty-two, ties two with an overall percentage of sixty-seven point six one, which I think is great. We have uh, we have a lot of teams competing now and um, you know, overall, we're doing really well, which is exciting. Andrew Scovio has also provided me with performing arts update as well. There are several accomplishments and items in the works that I will share. Um, Ella shared some of them, so I'll try not to duplicate. Um, but Andrew did share that thirteen um Marblehead High School students performed in the Massachusetts Music Educator Association Senior District Festival on January eighth, tenth, and eleventh at Lexington High. Twelve singers and one trumpet player um had participated. This is the most students MHS has has had accepted to the festival in at least a decade, so that's really exciting. Um, they rehearsed with musical peers from schools around Northeast Mass and gave tremendous performance at the January eleventh concert. Five of these students are preparing for all-state auditions the Saturday at Shrewsbury High School. Um, Ella mentioned the two a cappella groups, so I won't repeat that, but the Jewel Tones and Luminescence are are getting ready to do some competitions, which is awesome. I get a little flavor of both of them and uh at the end of that, right before the holiday break. Uh, so some really cool um stuff going on. So if you get a chance to go check them out, I would do that. Uh, the MHS Drama Club is very busy preparing two productions, The Sleepwalker, which is a play written and directed by uh Marblehead High School senior Benji Boyd. It will be performed in Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild's prelimi- preliminary round on March first. That's really exciting. I love uh student-led student-written performances. That's that's great news. Audition is wrapped up this week for the school musical Hades Town Teen Edition, which will be performed in April. Um, and then finally, um, I I, yeah, as you see on the agenda, we will be discussing the updated proposed F twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar, the proposal for this year's competency determination for those who did not pass MCAS and an update on a Marblehead High School roof project. Thank you. Stay warm and be well. That's all I have, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Do you remember that? Appreciate it. Okay, I'm gonna move on to our consent, action, and agenda items. Um, the first request for approval is the DECA overnight trip. Um, Julia, were you gonna speak to that or?
I'm gonna invite Mr. Paul Lee.
Okay, perfect. Oh, welcome. Mr. Lee, so welcome. Do you mind coming up right to that table? Thank you. Appreciate it.
We welcome Paul Lee. Send his a new teacher to Marblehead High School and our new advisor for DECA. We're very happy um that he's taken on this role and he's gonna share about the upcoming trip.
Thank you.
Um, it's uh. Hi.
Hi.
Um, so yes, this is my first year at the Marblehead High School. Uh, outside from uh the business teacher um and DECA advisor. I was a former DECA advisor at another school. Um, DECA is a um co-curricular activity that has um I think we first signed up about close to eighty members. Um, that number got whittled down. We took almost sixty students to the regional uh um career development conference and competition where uh thirty-six students qualified to move on to the state conference and competition, which is gonna be held in Boston February twenty-seventh. Um, Thursday night, Friday night, and it was around noon time on the Saturday. This is the sixty-seventh annual State Development Conference. Um, it's my understanding that my predecessor, um, Ms. Gallaghlin uh was a DECA advisor and had taken uh the same, you know, this group of 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 kids for uh for years. In my previous position, I took eighty-five students to the state competition and then fifteen students to the national uh competition in Orlando, which is where this year's will be s- will be held um across the country, that students will all form a part.
Great, so. Right. Um, so we're being asked to approve this as an overnight trip, which is our responsibility to do. So does anyone have any questions? Mr. Lee, is there?
Yeah, well, question, but for anyone, it's a thank you for the work you're doing with the students. It's a wonderful program. Um, and I know that you know, I've got a lot of positive feedback from various people who were able to attend. Um, Dan, just to keep you at the.
Chambers.
Um, so thank you for that work. Um, a quick question, and you gave a very comprehensive write-up, so I appreciate that. One thing was a little confusing to me. There was gonna be a lottery. That's for where our school goes, not where each of our students goes. You're all at the same.
We're all gonna be at the same. We're gonna be on the one roof.
I I started to get a little.
Yes. Uh, yes, so at seven o'clock, I have to hop on a Zoom with the state organization. They're gonna do a lottery. I met with the uh student leadership of DECA and they ranked their uh, they ranked their choices of the hotels that they want to stay in relationship to Washington and how close to the events are. So we we're hoping to get out first, but it's one of uh the the hotels that.
And the proposed price was for double occupancy, correct?
Uh, quads, quads and trupps.
Okay. That, it's just something that came up last year, the idea of, has the students don't always get to pick who they're with. I know that there is a priority, but if there's a lone student that we're asking a student to share a bed with someone they might not know.
So um, I I the um, the president of of the club and all the students did communicate with one another and all of the um assignments have been agreed upon and people that are are roaming with who they choose to be roaming with. And in my experience in the past, if there um has been an issue, I mean, you know, there there are gonna be thousands of students from all over the state um attending this and um, you know, we will wheel in cots if necessary and make requests to the hotels to accommodate everybody.
Okay, I just want to ensure that any student um you don't want to ever force a student to share a bed with someone if they're not comfortable.
Nope. No, absolutely not.
Okay. All right, perfect. Long sentence.
Allison, did you have any question? Um, the only question I had real quickly is um for the cost, if someone is unable to meet the cost, is there you know, whether are there um scholarships? Or is there availability?
Uh, yes, there is um there is a a procedure in place with the state organization and we've been doing some uh funders and to kind of um kind of offset the costs. I'll have to see what Janice has had done in the past, but I know there's a, I'm still going through the.
Yeah, no, I just, yeah, I just, I'm really just more just kind of going on record that, because there's still some time that I wish wouldn't want a student to not attend because they couldn't, they or the family can't meet the financial obligation, because in most cases for any kind of field trip, we have um the working for the superintendent, the administration, we'll be able to find uh funding for that.
And and it is um, there is a cost involved. Since um since I um started as advisor, we had our first meeting. Um, you know, it's, we don't let cost prevent you from taking, you know, from taking this opportunity. Um, so uh either at the, you know, at the district level or at the state level or even at the national level, I know that that there are scholarships, I mean, programs in place, uh, the specifics of which I don't know right now, but.
Yeah, no, I understand. And I know we would have.
And our, I think our P C O's in the past have been helpful.
Definitely on the district level. Okay, great. Okay, um, no other comments or questions? I'm gonna call. Sorry, John, sorry.
I just, I just wanted to say thank you to Paul. Um, I know this is nu- new in Marblehead and I I appreciate you taking on the endeavor and I just wanted to publicly say that if if there are any students who are struggling um for the cost, you and I can have conversations too, so we can make sure that it's an equitable um, you know, equity for everybody, so we can, we can have that conversation offline if needed. So I appreciate you and I appreciate you uh putting this uh agenda together for the committee to hopefully approve in a few minutes. So thank you.
It's a small group, but I can um check in with with every student just to make sure, but.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, I'm gonna call for a motion to approve the DECA State Career Development Conference and Competition Overnight Trip for February twenty-seventh, twenty-five through March first, twenty twenty-five. Some of it moved by Sarah Fox.
Second.
Second, Allison Taylor. I'll do a roll call. Al Williams.
In favor.
By Noda. Sarah Fox. Allison Taylor?
In favor.
Jen Schaffner in favor, five to zero, so all set. All set for your lottery.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. Thanks for doing that. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Um, will you let us know how it turns out?
Absolutely. I I, yeah, I sent an email blast out. The school newspaper has picked it up. They want to put some information on the TV, so.
Oh, that's wonderful. Good luck.
Thank you. Okay, um, schedule of bills is next. Um, we have a request um to approve last month's payment schedule bills. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the schedule bills for seven hundred forty-eight thousand three hundred thirty dollars and ninety-seven cents. So moved by Al.
Seconded.
Seconded by Sarah. Okay, any questions, comments? Lights? Okay, I'm gonna call for a roll call. Al Williams.
Favor.
Brian Oda.
In favor.
Sarah Fox.
Yay.
Allison Taylor?
In favor.
Jen Schaffner in favor, five to zero. Thank you. Um, we have on the list uh next our meeting minutes from January ninth, twenty twenty-five. However, I did not receive those in time. So we're gonna have to table that until our next meeting. I will make sure that we have those next time. Uh, we're gonna move on to school committee communication and discussion items. Uh, the next item is the competency determination for graduating students. Um, Superintendent Robert, who gave us a sort of a highlighted just description of the situation and as a result of the um MCAS no longer being the competency determination for graduation. So there was a discussion at our last meeting and we now have a proposal. Um, so Johnny, you do you want to present this?
Yes. I'll I'll start and Julia can jump in if I, uh, Ms. Speaker, uh, she wants to add anything for sure. Uh, so overall, uh, the proposal that's in front of you is 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 very similar to the proposal we we discussed in draft and we discussed last week. Uh, we did clarify um right above the uh chart that's there. It says that Marblehead Public School students in the graduating class of twenty twenty-five who have not yet earned their competency determinations through MCAS administrations can meet the requirements for competency determination through the following. That was the major change. We want to make sure we were very specific that we have to come up with a plan for this year and the school community is to vote on it with the thought being that we will have more in-depth um conversations in the spring for the fall, for next school year to determine um if we want to look at um some different levels of rigor um for the competency determination. But uh, you know, it's a very short window that we had from the, from the vote to the to now to making sure that we can get something in place. So realistically, the big, the big one is option one, and I'll just read it out loud for those at home. Courses and grades, we're looking that, um, and this is in line with the um, the MCAS, what the MCAS had been testing. So courses and grades that uh folks would need to um to complete would be English would need to receive a passing grade and credit for both English nine and English ten courses. Math would be receiving a passing grade and credit for both Algebra I and Geometry courses. And in science, they receive a passing grade and credit for biology and an additional lab science course. That would be for the graduating class of twenty twenty-five. Again, we will have further updated, more in-depth conversations about what that might look like moving forward. If there are students who are, who don't meet those um those uh, those um requirements, then there is an option two to develop a portfolio to demonstrate the competency determination. I see that as probably very few, if any, students. And then uh MCAS alt is also still in play. So that's um, those are three um different options that are available. Everything else is pretty much the same. We did uh talk about the, the rest of the document is in regard to graduation promotion requirements, which we will talk more about when we do the um programmer studies, I think, at the next meeting. But it outlines what we look for, for everybody to be able to graduate, which is four years of English. We're going to add in the financial literacy, which is still in discussions, which we need to look at, um, likely for the effect, effect in the graduating class of twenty twenty-nine, so we want to start that you you know, new freshman. Uh, math, four years of math, four years of science, four years of social studies, two years of a world language um and visual performing arts, et cetera. So um, the rest of the graduation promotion requirements are very um similar to what we had talked about last time. Um, so unless I missed anything, Julia, if you feel like there's anything I missed you want to um expound upon, that's fine. If not, we can have some uh, if there's any questions, we can certainly do that.
Hey, many members, special needs.
I just want to make sure we are looking at this again more thoroughly for future years. Um, because I I think that we had this discussion before, that there might be some areas that um we wanted to deeper into, but given the time crunch, where I think this is appropriate for our.
Yes, and I thi- and I think um, you know, we we have had those discussions. I think there needs to be larger discussions and I just, I didn't want to be remiss and also stating that Governor Healy has already started discussions about potentially coming out of the statewide avenue for competency determination, whether that will be in place for next year or not, or what that looks like. We don't not know yet. But there are conversations about that, so we have to keep an eyeball on that. But what we're gonna plan to do here in Marblehead is have the discussions as if there's no other competency determination on the table, so we can have a plan in place so that the incoming freshmen know exactly what the expectations are coming into the the school year next year. So those those conversations will be had, will present again and uh have the discussion in in the spring with the school committee so we can make that uh, those decisions at that point. Thank you.
So for for this proposal, can we just make sure that it's, you know, what years it's for versus the incoming freshman? Because I I mentioned last time, I definitely want to make sure that we are we add a little bit more to it. It's a little more more robust um for new incoming classes versus.
Yep, that's why we added the uh qualifier that this is for the graduating class of twenty twenty-five. So this is just a snapshot on time right now.
Just at the top, if we could just make, I don't know, something more, something more up at the top also.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can, yeah, that's, that's fine. As long as the committee vote, if we, if, when we get to the vote, it, you know, if we add in competency determination, termination school year twenty-four, twenty-five at the top, uh, so with whatever uh amendment to that that the committee feels is appropriate, we can do that.
Okay.
I I I appreciate that feedback, Allison. Thank you.
I just had one quick question, uh, well, either for John or for Julia. I just wanted some clarification. Um, it seems obvious, but I just wanted clarification for the grad, for the uh graduation and promotion um requirements. Says, you know, grade nine, ten, eleven, twelve, English, uh, math, four years. I'm assuming that means um consecutive levels of math. So in other words, if you took grade nine math, let's, whatever that is, let's say, and you didn't pass, so you took it again in ten, and again in eleven, and again in twelve. Does that count? Like, you're taking the same course over and over again, or?
No, you would take that as to get the passing. Well, two.
Okay.
Like English or.
Okay, so it is a um matriculating program, okay, just wanted. Um, okay. Anybody else?
I have a question.
Right.
If a student transfers in from another school in a different state. And after review transcripts and we deem it not aligned with ours. Is there like plans to put kids in after school help to get caught up to our curriculum or?
For the competency determination?
Yes.
We would do the portfolio option, in that case, if they did not successfully pass and receive a credit free. For just if senior comes in this year.
Yeah.
Uh so that's why we have the option too, because they might not have enough time to take a full year course at this point. Um so we'd offer, that's where we came up with option two, and then going forward, it would be uh we have some maybe a similar option where if students successful the first whatever threshold we set. Then we'd have like alternative options for students, which would then apply for anybody trying.
Okay, so I'm gonna call for a motion to approve the competency determination proposal as submitted. To reflect for the graduating class of twenty four, twenty five, the top. Some of. Uh moved by Sarah.
Seconded.
Seconded by. Brian. Brian, and I'll call for, we'll call Al Williams.
Yay.
Brian Oda.
In favor.
Sarah Fox. Al- uh Alison Taylor.
In favor.
Jen Schaffner in favor of this. Sarah, thank you. So you're all set.
Thank you.
Um next, we have on the agenda, the twenty five, twenty six school calendar. John, did you wanna speak to that or?
I will, um I I I first wanna say that Julia's done the bulwark of the work in in in. Establishing the outlay of the calendar and seeking input, so I I wanna give her the credit cuz I certainly. Did not do that, um but what I will tell you is that when we brought to the the ca- committee last time, there was some conversations in the committee about some of the days. We had similar feedback from staff and from administrators um that the committee had. We brought it back to the table um and to stakeholders. And the the calendar that's in that's been in the that was in put in the drop box that's in front of you. Would um make the following um changes to the previous uh previously proposed draft calendar. So starting at the top. Um what we're looking to do is have the have two PD days at the beginning of the school year on uh August twenty fifth and twenty sixth. The students would start on the twenty seventh, pre K through twelve. So they would come the twenty seventh and the twenty eighth, which. I know it sounds like it's two days, but it's a nice soft start. Um this is not atypical for a lot of districts, they come in, they do a couple of days. If there wasn't a contractual obligation for the twenty ninth, we would have three days, but that's a that's a different level of discussion that we're we'll probably have the following year. Um so for this year, everyone start on the twenty seventh, they'd have a couple of days, come in. Understand the routines, kind of get their feet a little wet, um you know, kind of understand where they're supposed to be, all the new incoming students. And hit the ground running on the on uh the second of September. Um the new teacher orientation um would be bumped back, it's not reflected on the calendar itself just cuz of formatting issues, but if you look in the dialogue box in the middle. The new teacher orientation would actually be on the previous Friday. August twenty second, um the the union, we worked with the union leadership and. Based upon the language in the contract and their willingness to allow that, you know, um a agree to make that happen. We're gonna have the new teacher orientation on the Friday, which will allow us to start. On, you know, our school year proper on Monday, the twenty fifth with PD. Um and what that does is at the end of the calendar, that allows us to have our our uh. Last day of school on the seventeenth. In the previous iteration, our last day of school, I believe, was on the twenty second, so we gained, you know, two days there. Which is nice, um so it allows us to, you know, the five days for the snow days at the end would be. The eighteenth, obviously, we would skip over the nineteenth for for Juneteenth. Uh the eighteenth, twenty second, twenty third, twenty fourth and twenty fifth would be our allotted snow days, um. So with no snow days, we would be able to get out on June seventeenth, which is much earlier than me than we are right now. The other change from the previous iteration, um there's a lot of discussion about the the uh. The PD day being on the election day, so we we coupled it with the. Veterans um holiday on the eleventh, so we put the tenth as a PD day, which would allow the students and family, you know, families and students to have uh the long weekend there. We would have PD on the tenth. Um and then, you know, obviously, the holiday in the eleventh, but then uh. Uh we added in the parent teacher conferences, you'll see in November, the fifth and the twelfth, there was some feedback that um. They wanted to kind of do consecut- you know, um each week for the P for the parent teacher conferences versus doing a full day and a half day. So we we put them on the Wednesdays, uh November fifth and November twelfth, because it's a longer, you know, contractually, they the teachers and educators here are four. And then one of those two days to be determined will also have an evening event. So between those two days and the evening event, um those two days being longer days and the evening event. Uh we believe that we can uh address the parent teacher conferences there. And then that would allow us to have. Uh instruction, some con continuity of instruction from thirteenth, fourteenth, seventh, you know, the whole week of the seventeenth up until. Um the November um break, the November holiday, Thanksgiving holiday. So it allowed us a little bit more, uh you know, some continuity there. And then I think those are the major changes that we talked about. Did I miss anything, Julia, that you can see? Anyone wanna weigh in on?
We we saw the Sarah feedback, we watched the PD committee. And some really great feedback, um talked to administrative team, um so try to highlight some of the. From what we talked about at the last meeting, um. The notes, so that's where we've made some of the shifts, but also with the feedback and the collaboration would be really helpful, so.
Yeah, thank you. So happy to entertain any questions.
So this feels pretty different than what we saw last week, in that it really starts us a week. The week the the last week of September there, um or August, I'm sorry. And I have several concerns. The first one is that really shortens again a summer, that is the shortest summer these kids have ever seen, and our staff has probably ever seen. Um it's gonna be it's gonna be a hard spring, it's a long run, straight through with no breaks. Um and then they the with no snow days, they get out late, probability is of of us having no snow days. Probably some and none, so we could be pushing back even further. And then we bring them back soon, so if there's any summer that I wanna let the staff and the students have till after. Um Labor Day, it would be, it would be this year. Um also, I think. That the choppy start, the being in for two days, having four days off, having. A forty week, two full weeks, then a bunch of days off, it's a start, stop, start, stop, start. For young kids and students with special needs, that start-stop is extremely disruptive. It's also really disruptive for working families who are looking. With both parents working and are looking for continuity of childcare, it's much easier to find a week camp at the end of the summer rather than a day Friday here or this day here. So if we could do a hybrid between this and what was. Presented last week and just move that so the students' first day is September second, that's something I would um be very supportive of. And I just wanted to clarify, um. It for the past, I think. Eight years, I think we've done um pre K in kindergarten, start two days later. I love that they're starting the same day now, I just wanna make sure we've. We were using those first two days to do, I think, some screening. I thought it was much more productive when we did screening in April. Has that adjustment also been done to link with the new change in the calendar? Um and how does that training?
Yes, we we for the last couple of years, we've done our screenings early and put it in April. This is just kind of um. That was a holdover, so it's time to make that change. Uh and especially, I think the timing is right now that we do contractually have the two professional development days to start the school year, uh I think would be equitable stuff for.
And I think it's great, from what I see, the little ones, when their big siblings go off to school are are excited and all of a sudden wondering why they're not starting, so I I like that. Um and they deserve a hundred and eighty days of education as well. But for me, it really is uh that that start, I would wanna push back to September, September.
Anybody, Alison?
Uh yeah, I I am definitely not okay with a pre Labor Day start, uh this year especially. Um and I'm not, I'm not really sure our community would would be thrilled about that either. Uh I know that's definitely not something we talked about um or suggested last meeting, I don't think, or maybe someone had just missed it, but um. I would be mu- much more, I I know that it. Is hard, but I would be much more amenable to going to school on the um. Twenty second. Than starting um before Labor Day. Without question. I don't wanna belabor any of Sarah's points either. Um I I I agree, and I do also like starting at the same time um. For the littles.
So Brian or Al?
So my my kids went to school in the middle ages, so it, you know, but I, you know, so I know that I'm a good sample around that, but I I do remember being part of a. Both was working, I was not a big fan of the intermittent starting, stopping. So um but again, I can't speak for the community in this regard. But I don't know, is it that big a deal if we were to start that the week of the first or the second? Is that big?
So I think we ought to hear from our administrators, I will, I will say this, um our administrators worked hard to create this calendar. I think we have tremendous pressure on our calendar, I think, we have tremendous pressure on our calendar. We all know that, I'm going to assume, maybe I shouldn't, that this has been discussed with the union leadership.
It has.
Agrees with this. And between the administrators and the union leadership, if this is agreed upon, I a hundred percent support what their recommendation is. Um I I mean, I understand the pressure, we always have this pressure, especially this year, I know we have the um. Total three days off for the religious holidays in the fall, I know it's difficult. Um it was, it was um. In my mind, it's I appreciate the fact that the union agreed for the orientation to start early so that we could get those two days in, I know that's something that John felt very strongly about, Julia feels strongly about. And I think the union has felt, leadership has felt strong about wanting to have the professional development early. I also appreciate the fact that we have, I believe, more professional development. This year, so all of that puts pressure on the calendar. Um and I think, you know, I think our community understands that. Um but I just personally feel that we ought to be supporting the recommendation of our administration and our.
Thank you. Can I can I just add in for a minute? I appreciate that perspective, I appreciate everyone's perspective, I mean, it's definitely from different points of view, I I totally understand, and there's no one right answer. What I can say is, I've I've uh I've been doing this a long time and I've done it both ways, um. I've done it after Labor Day, I've done it before Labor Day, um I've done it with the intermittent weeks like that, uh and. What I can say is that when I've done it similar to this proposed schedule. Even though it seems like those two days are like a choppy week, it's uh I think the both the students and the educators. Feel that it's a nice way to start because they can get in, they can say hi to the kids, they can. Meet them, they can establish those routines the first couple of days, so when they come back on the second, they can hit the ground running versus. Starting on the second and then doing those couple of things, and then there's like a couple of days that end of that week, and then we've kind of lost a few days, um when you when you start looking at. Continuity of days, so that I just wanted to share that, it's um. It's important to me that I think. I I'm very attuned to our current calendar and the shortness of the holiday, um Sarah, that you may mention of, I think that's. That's definitely a valid point, um but I also look at this as uh this is a way to reset the calendar moving forward. Uh we reset it, we have, um if we follow this this calendar, we have some nice. Solid continu- you know, continuous days after that, you know, the first couple of weeks. Um throughout the whole calendar, and we have some um PD days that are positioned so that we can address. Um things like the end of trimesters and assessments and things like that, so aligned with um uh parent teacher conferences, so. You know. That that's that's why that that's why the proposal, and I think um to to Jen's point, that administration and the union leadership um had agreed um that this would be a good way to start next school year, so. It is for for your consumption, and obviously, at the end of the day, um it's your decision to vote on the calendar, so I would appreciate the support, but I would understand if um. No, it doesn't doesn't go that route, so that's all I have to say. Julia, do you have anything to add to that?
Okay. So looking at what you presented to us two weeks ago, and then this, um so I'm I'm going from your pro- your original. Recommendation, and I'm also factoring in that we had had several years of starting prior to Labor Day, the last two years we hadn't. And that was a response to pressure from the community to not start prior to Labor Day. So I wanna I wanna be cognizant of that and just ask if there is a potential to take those two days and put them back where you originally suggested at our meeting two weeks ago. On January second and June eighteenth, so we still end not carrying over to the following week. Of of June, um. Cuz the nineteenth being a federal holiday. And then we can, it's a hybrid of your suggestion this week and your suggestion last week that addresses that concern we have heard from the community. Is that a possibility?
I think, um, I I'm sorry, go ahead, Julia.
Which day was it?
The twenty seventh.
Yes.
And the twenty eighth become January second and um June or June eighteen. Cuz I think January the second is. You know, to have folks come back. For one day on the second and then have a hot and then have a weekend, I'm. I don't.
That 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 was the day that we, I think we got the most pushback on, to be honest with you, and I think there was members of this committee, if I'm not mistaken, had had the same concern of of coming back on that second, so.
Yeah, I mean, it was me, I thought you can you can name me, I'm I'm fine with being that person, I. I have the same strong concerns about coming back before Labor Day, e- especially this year, and I I just wanna reiterate the why, this isn't. Um a lack of belief in the administration or union leadership, um it's it's simply my opinion and my. Um view on this calendar, knowing we have students that are going to have to. Be in school essentially from now through June with three days off.
Mm-hmm.
Um and potentially through the end of June, if we have even more snow days, um. And so it it it's shortening their summer.
I think we also recognize that, you know, the high school students, for a lot of them. Are back early because a lot of, you know, the kids in sports are back that last week, if not the day before, so, you know, they're already um. Participating in, you know, their captain's boxes or whatever they are, but they're, you know, they're sort of back themselves, so I think. Man, I understand your point, there's just a lot of pressure. Um I frankly don't agree, I am supporting this.
So so what what I would say, fine, in a final conversation about this is that. You know, we took we took the input from the committee, we took the input from the admin, we took input from the union leaders and teams, and we tried to mesh it and try to make it. You know, so everybody's concerns were addressed in some way, shape or form, and and obviously not everybody's needs are met. Um what I will say is that I would like to pro. Move forward this proposal, I'll put it to a vote, and if it gets voted down, then we can certainly bring it back and we 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 uh relook at it, so I I think that's where I'd like to be at this point.
Okay, John, you just mentioned something, where I thought you were going is we didn't get input from parents.
That's just gonna ask.
And is that something we should be doing?
Well, that's what happens at our meetings, right?
Well, yeah, but I'm not sure this is the, like, we've done surveys, which I think is much better to get. Now, I'm not saying we should just, what I'm suggesting is, we probably go with this as it is, right, just because I think we're at the point where. We've processed it, but I do think what I'm sensing is there's kind of a glaring omission that we really don't have good. Input from parents, we probably should maybe try to do that next year, as we're putting together.
I will say, I I agree, and that's I was just gonna ask John whether he heard anything from parents, cuz that is a good point, but just as a matter of practice. We generally don't survey parents about the calendar because it's this, there's so much that goes into this calendar, we do need, I believe we need to take into account. Understanding some of the concerns, but we have onerous. Regulations that were under and and under the pressure of calendar. The purpose of us discussing this in in open meeting and why we have generally have a, you know, first calendar presented and. We wait till a future meeting is to give the opportunity to the public to hear about it, they can come speak and public comment, they certainly can can email or contact, I don't know, John, if you heard anybody from.
So what I can say is that um. Uh this community is great about reaching out to me when they agree, disagree, or have a a um opinion about something, uh what I can tell you is, I don't recall. I don't recall any any parent emails or or conversations about the calendar specific, um. Um based upon the the conversations that have been had at the school committee, about a lot of the other topics we've talked about, yes, for certain, um the calendar, no, huh. And I think, you know, to your point, um and Schaffner is uh. You know, we we have these open meetings so that people can certainly um have the avenue to to um to. Voice their thoughts and concerns, so um and I, you know, if there was an overwhelming. Desire for something different that was conveyed, I certainly would have brought that to the team as well, um if there there wasn't, so.
I think that's the point I'm making, John, the the calendar that was presented last week and discussed in an open meeting is. Is drastically different than this because it starts after Labor Day and we heard no complaints about starting after Labor Day. I was quite shocked to see something that to me felt drastically different, starting a week prior with a very start-stop feel to it. And asked to be vote on, voted on that same night without giving the opportunity to the community to give us feedback on that. Last year, we did table the um, calendar until our February meeting. So I will um, ask, I'll make a motion to table this until our February meeting so that we can um. Give people a chance to give some feedback on this because that is a risk change.
Second. Um, okay, so we have a um, first from Sarah. Second, Elsa, you said it, right?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, I do think that's a good point. I'm gonna push back again and say it is not out of the ordinary to start before Labor Day. We didn't, I guess, for the last two years, but for many years we started before Labor Day. So going back to like twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen.
Most, most, uh, many districts are doing that now just because of snow days, et cetera, et cetera. So.
So I do, um, however, I will say, I think it does make sense. We can put it out there. I actually will reach out to both Grace and to Lee. Um, and have them, you know, maybe sort of highlight it in, in some media coverage. So we make sure folks um, get a chance to, to see what the proposal is and we can um, certainly, if that's. Over to the committee, move this to the next um, to the next meeting so that folks can um, weigh in. And we will ask folks, please, to do that before the next public comment, either by email or call. And that probably superintendent. Okay, so we have a motion on table, call for a vote. Uh, now. Brian? Sarah?
Yeah.
Um, Allison?
In favor.
Uh, Jen Schaffner in favor. So four to zero, we will move this to, I'm sorry, four to one, sorry.
I do have a question, though, when you move this thing. Um, we used to separate pre-K and kindergarten on the first day of school. Only because it's absolute chaos in lower elementary schools that first day. Are they planning on doing something like that staggering the pre-K time? Because you have to be in that parking lot when the kids are coming in. It's just pretty, pretty tense. For pre-K kids who are starting for the first time, it could be frightening. So I was just wondering, John. Are they planning on doing something like that just to land it by an hour? So they're not in with a rush?
I think, I think that's still, I, and I agree with you, Brian. Sometimes that is, is a little, um, you know. Is, is a situation we need to look at. So we'll definitely revisit that. Um, if, if uh, if uh, we need to. I think um, you know, there, there's pros and cons. There's pros and cons to starting them all at the same time. And this uh, cons, you know, cons to not doing that. So I think this was, this was input that we got. And I think um, I'm just trying to be mindful of, you know, the administrators and the staff that are working with the kids uh. And what, and what they feel would be best. So uh, we'll definitely visit that, um, Brian, in terms of the, if there needs to be a delay. Even if it's the same day, but with delayed starts, we can um, you know, in your terms, delay the, or, you know, a, address the chaos. Uh, certainly, that's a concern for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move that, make a note of that, John. We move that to the February.
Yep. Okay.
Um, okay. And again, I'll follow up with the media, just, you know, make sure that's maybe part of the highlights that folks can see that. Um, okay, I'm gonna move on to the MHS roof update. Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. Like differently.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, so I think we've had a couple of, I know we've had a couple of facility meetings recently within the last month or so. Uh, and the hot topic on those meetings has been the roof and where we're going. Uh, the first meeting, which was probably just a month ago, a little over a month ago, uh, Leftfield and Raymond Designs both came in to the meeting. Uh, virtually and kind of laid out the options for us on what, what we're looking at for the roof. Um, the initial five point three six million dollar uh, bond that was drawn or approved. Uh, for the roof project, uh, really was to just remove the roof, put a new rubber surface down on the roof. Um. Once we, once we got into the process a little bit, uh, we hired Leftfield as our owner's project manager. And then we went out to bid for a design or RFP for a designer and selected Raymond Designs. Um. They actually got up on the roof and took a really serious look at everything on the roof, not just the rubber on the roof and where things were. So when they got there on the roof, they did identify that the majority of our HVAC system, HVAC systems were at their end of their life. Uh, these HVAC systems use the refrigerant that is no longer manufactured and cannot be bought. Um, on the open market. Uh, it can be obtained, but at a very high premium. What they would do is they would recover it from other units that are coming out of, out of circulation. And uh, reuse that refrigerant. Um, but it is very, very expensive. So as it was explained to me, we would have to, or not be, the contractor would have to disconnect all of this HVAC equipment. Remove it from the roof, put down a new surface and option. A would be to put new HVAC equipment with the latest refrigerant that's available on the market. Um, that was option A or option B would be to put the old equipment back up on the roof. Have to charge it with some type of um, recovered uh, refrigerant. Uh, and then we probably have maybe two to three years left of this HVAC equipment's lifespan. Uh, and that's if it even survives coming off the roof and then being put back on the roof. There is uh, I, I actually went on the roof twice this year. Not my happiest moment. I'm not a get on the roof kind of guy. But um, I, you know, I was quite shocked at the amount of rust and deterioration on the HVAC units. And that's not uh, anything to do with uh, preventative maintenance or anything that we could have done to resist, uh, to, you know, combat that. Uh, for the most part, that occurs because we are so close to the ocean and the salt air comes in quite frequently. Uh, I think that they have made, or they will be making recommendations in the, when they go to spec, when they expect to go out to bid. That there has to be some additional rust contamination, uh, rust. Oh, yes, rest, rest proof prevention, thank you, on any units, everyone. Uh, so that we're not facing this uh, again in, in twenty something years. To talk about the roof itself and, and maybe this, this will help Mr. Kalpin or answer Mr. Kalpin's question or maybe shed some light on Mr. Kalpin's question. Um, yes, the roof material that was used in construction back in two thousand and one. Uh, hasn't been known across the country to fail. It is a specific roof that was relatively new at that time. We are not getting a life expectancy. No school district, no building is getting a life expectancy. There is a specific word for the type of roofing and it's slipping my mind right now. It might be in this document somewhere. Um, but this type of roof is known to fail prematurely. Um, and you know, Bobblehead at the time that they made the decision to put this roof on, went with the designs, the architects, the latest and greatest. Uh, what was out there and, and they made an educated decision to put this roof on. It just, I just don't think it had been out long enough to really. Stand, you know, to, to get the feedback on longevity of the roof. Um, you know, again, we're gonna put a new roof on this building, anyway or another. Um, whether we put it on with HVAC is hopefully soon, soon to be decided. Uh. As it's been explained to me, it makes sense to me that we should not take the old units off and try and put them back on. If we do, and then try and get a debt exclusion a couple of years down the road. Um, it's been projected that it would cost an additional two point five million beyond what's already projected to do the HVAC. So if they have to mobilize twice, then to take the units off, put it back on, and then take them off again in two or three years. Um, with new units, new refrigerant, at today's prices, they're saying probably be about two and a half million dollars additional cost. Above and beyond what they've already projected, just to do the whole project at one time. Um, in addition, once they put the roof material down. If they get up there to remove equipment two years from now or three years from now. Um, there's a high likelihood that something's going to puncture that new material, whether it be, uh, you know, taking it off of a bolt. Or, you know, some type of a, you know, taking that, those units off, that something could puncture the roof. And at that point, it would void our warranty. So that's obviously a concern. So I think as this has been explained to me and uh, and everybody, the, the five point five three six million dollars that was originally proposed. Could cover the cost of resurfacing majority of the roof, the vast majority of the roof. Uh, the additional eight point six million dollars that we're going to go to town meeting and ask for debt exclusion. For the HVAC portion should cover the majority of the HVAC. So it's, you know, it's kind of lining up the way it was when they, when they originally estimated it. Uh, and it was not a, was not a feasibility study. We did not contract for the full feasibility study. And, you know, hindsight twenty twenty, I think in the future, when we have large projects like this. We'll go to town meeting and ask for money to fund the feasibility studies that we know how much money we actually need uh, for a project. Um, but it's easy to play money when quarterback. I wasn't here then and, and I, I can't say I wouldn't be in the same decision. I would have gone in the same direction and talked to people that we're familiar with and asked them for a, a, a good estimate number. Um, and, and use that number at town meeting. I think this is an experience that tells us, no, maybe we should look in a different way. But anyways, uh, would be my recommendation, um, and I heard that this is the finance subcommittee meeting. I'm sorry, the facility subcommittee, that we do go for the eight point six one million dollar debt exclusion. This would be an additional debt exclusion of the auction. Um, the bond through the original.
Mike, can you just help us explain if we, you know, if, if the school committee and the town decide to do. We should do the HVAC at the same time, do your recommendation. Just an idea of there is some length in terms of killing those HVAC units. I just want to make sure we're aligned around what. What the project completion may look like.
Yeah, sorry, I gave this update in the um, yeah, so it's up. So the way it's been explained to me is that they have done an initial design plan, but they haven't gotten down to the specifications. Over the next three to four months, they're gonna get into the specifications and draw up the plans. Uh, for specifying what HVAC unit specifically will be up on the roof. Once they get all these plans done, then they need to vote to bid, sort of bid out for a general contractor. Um, and um, they'll put the specs out. We have to wait for the bids to come back. Once the bids come back and it gets awarded, then they can actually order the units. It would be on the general contractor to order the units. So somebody, the question was asked, we stopped part of it this summer. And because we don't have all the drawings and all the specifications, there's no way that we could have all of those pieces in place. Design, bid, submit the bid on the streets, get the bid results back, award the bidding, get the equipment ordered. And have anything here on the roof uh, for anytime during the summer. The earliest they projected would be December of twenty twenty five, that they, earliest if they started right now, put something on the streets right now, earliest would be December twenty twenty five. So I think what their, what their hope of hopeful is that we get through town meeting, get the approval at town meeting. Um, and then we would be on track for probably May of twenty six for a roof to be delivered. I have informed them, there is no way that anybody is near the field house gym roof. Uh, until after graduation, because the field house is the backup for weather graduation. And once they start removing anything from that roof, uh, there's a high likelihood that there's weather outside, there's gonna be weather outside. Uh, if they start taking, taking stuff off the roof pretty much. So um, take a start on another section, you know. Prepping, getting ready, you know, getting staging and, and on site. But as far as uh, any actual construction on the roof, uh, that would have to happen after graduation. And most likely after swings of the party for the, uh, winter for the summer break.
Allison has to hear me, so. Allison?
Yeah, uh, I, so I definitely think there are some um. Things that we need to learn from here. And I think if we can just kind of walk through the timeline. So that the community can understand. What happened when and why. And I fully understand that you weren't here then. So there's a lot of that that you can't do. Um, but I think the rest of us can kind of fill in those, those details because I think understandably, the questions from the, you know, this. This just kind of adds on and piles on to the community's concern that, you know, what are we doing? We're not managing our money. Why did we not get it right the first time? And I think we need to be kind of, you know, own things and be upfront and honest about. You know, where kind of the, the missteps were. And again, I'm not, there's no fingers. This is just kind of all, like you said, a learning experience, which I think is important. And obviously, most of you are not even here for this. Um, two years ago, when we went, it was just the roof. I think that originally, like you said, there was no feasibility study. There was, and, and again, I'm just. Wanting to be really, really clear about this for the community's sake. As you said, there's no feasibility study. So no one went up there and did a deep dive and really understood exactly what was going on. Or looked at the HVAC units and how they're attached to the roof as opposed to how they could be attached to the roof so they could be more easily removable. That type of thing. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike. Um, and so the number that was given originally two years ago. Was, that's why the number was what it was two years ago versus what it is now. Because now someone has actually been up there to look and find all of these other pieces. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know exactly what the original tell me was. I don't know if it was two years ago or what's gonna hear some of it. Like I've heard inflicting stories of that. It's not something that I needed to, I didn't, I didn't need to be right on this one. I just need to make sure we do it right.
Sure, of course.
I did not get the ball rolling on this. Um, a lot of credit to Mary Delai, came in, um.
Yes.
Uh, she, she got the ball rolling and handed it off to me. She had the OPM contract in place before I even got here, which was phenomenal. It actually probably saved us three or four months of additional delays. And, and I know that there was a lot of, a lot of things going on last year. Uh, I know Michelle Preston, who probably would have overseen this, was. Doing double or triple duty at that time, and I think she deserves a lot of credit for what she did. Um, but, you know, I, I can't imagine trying to juggle a roof project on top of, um, you know, interim superintendent. Uh, the other way was she was taking off. So, um, I, I think that was two years ago, right?
You know, there was, there was some delay in like getting the RFP out to do, to do that a, as well, which.
Traditionally, that would come out of my office. And I think she had other responsibilities on her plate that were far more pressing. Uh, and if I was in a situation, I probably wouldn't have made similar or the same, um, you know, we run stupid.
Yeah, I just think we need, I, I'm just trying to be as, as transparent as possible with the public. Because I, these are the questions. They're all over social media. These are the questions that people have. Um, a, as to kind of the why and what was the delay and what happened. Um, and I, I, I don't think it helps our cause at all for any of the asks that we may or may not have this year or next. Or into the future, um, unless we are, are transparent about it and understand that. Yes, there were some things that we, you know, we could do better. Um, yes, there were some things, as you mentioned, that were out of our control because you have to choose priorities. Um. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that and that that's why we are. Asking for the additional money. It's not that the cost of the roof went up eight million dollars.
It's the scope, scope of the project, the scope of the project changed from the original thing. So I think that's, that's a piece that needs to be discussed as well. Um, cause I don't think that the, that five million and change was a bad, necessarily bad number for the roof or what they.
Right.
Were planning to do, but since Mike's come on board and everything he just said, I don't repeat everything. Uh, we discovered that the scope of the project is much greater than initially intended. Um, and so I think the, the conversation out in the public is, well, it was five million, now it's fourteen million. Oh my God, the HVAC is eight million dollars. Well, um, yes, and yes, to an extent, but it's also, you have to think about all the things that come with that, connecting, changing, moving. Uh, there's a lot of things. So it's not just, oh, we're buying air conditioning units for eight million dollars. That's, 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 um, that's.
No, I'm just trying to, yeah, as, to simplify it as much as possible. I, and, and I see it as two things. I see, you know, number one, the, the, the misstep of not doing a full investigation or a feasibility study. When we got that first number and brought it to town meeting, and then now the scope is, is different. And that's why the number is different. Those two pieces are really, really important.
And I think it's, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I think it's also important to say, like, you know, if. If Mike and I were coming into this and we said, wow, there were some missteps, we, you know, we want to start from scratch, right? Just let's, let's put that out there. If we're gonna start from scratch, then we'd be, we'd be another like year out from where we're, we're looking at. Because we'd have to start from everything. And that five million dollars sitting there is, is sitting there. So we're trying to, we're trying to put together a plan that makes sense. Cause ultimately what had, what I think the community needs to understand is in order for the high school roof to be. Um, uh, appropriate and to last and to have the warranty that we needed to have, which is twenty, twenty-five years, depending upon who, who does the project. Um, has to, we have to do it from soup to nuts. I think, you know, that this conversation out there, cobbling it together, that's not gonna work. Um has to, we have to do it from soup to nuts. I think, you know, that this conversation out there, cobbling it together, that's not going to work. Um, you know, Mike already talked about, you know, pulling units off, putting them back on, the likelihood that they're not going to, you know, last that long. Um so I think that that's the narrative that needs to be out there is, you know, we're, we're working with what we, what we were handed us, but also trying to be responsible in terms of the cost, the project and the longevity of the project. And having done roof projects in the past, you don't want to do it. Um you 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 want to do it in a way that is holistic and not in in pieces and in looking to, you know, cut um corners to save a couple of dollars um to do it right. We need to do it from start to finish, and that's why we're at the fourteen million dollars and.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, a- again, and maybe I wasn't clear, but I don't, I don't disagree with it at all. I just I know what the community wants and to understand, and if we want to get this passed, I know what the community needs to understand. And that includes, you know, things that, and and I understand they were out of your control. There are things that happened before you, either of you were here. And this is not about pointing fingers. It's just about learning and knowing what we can do better next time. And I think the fact that you're trying to get that, you continue to try to expedite this from the perspective of not waiting a whole nother year, which, you know, we're already going to have to wait till twenty twenty six. We don't want to wait a whole nother year. That's a whole nother year of children having to sit with a leaky roof of mold potentially infiltrating in new places, depending upon the weather and all of those um, you know, attributing factors. So I I'm grateful that you are, and I don't disagree with the need for the money at all. Um maybe I should have led with that. I just, we need the community support for this, and we need to be it's what they have begged us for is that, you know, they need us to be transparent in order to um to get us there.
So Allison, an additional piece, I think that hasn't been clearly stated, and so I will state it. Uh if you think back to to two years ago, three years ago, when we were talking about the roof cost, you were on the facility subcommittee. Um, we originally had a number that was earmarked, I think it was around the three million dollar mark. And we were going to be bringing it to town meeting, so we had asked for an estimate. Um uh the administration at that point came back to the facility subcommittee with this estimate um in the in the five plus million dollar range and had told us it had been done by um Leftfield. Leftfield at the time was engaged with the Brown School. Um very wonderful firm to work with and very impressed with working with them throughout that project. And I I will be honest, I didn't question anything. Um it never occurred to me to ask did the person estimating get on the roof? So then all of this came about in and in the fall, we found out, because we uh had signed on Leftfield for this project last spring. Then run on the architect, then they came out and did their their site work, and then this information came back. Um I reached out and said, how did, how did we miss this? And at that point, it was brought to my attention that Leftfield had been given a quote, the three million dollar quote that we had previously seen and said, does this look right? And so they they were just asked as a favor, they were working on the other project to give a number. This was not clearly told to the facility subcommittee, by the way.
No.
And they took the square footage by what the market, or grid square footage was, and that's where that number came up.
Yep.
I, the number we brought to town meeting, I shame on me, I never, ever, ever.
It's not shame on you. That's not what I was saying.
I mean, I try not, I I wouldn't try to my, I I've always tried not to micro manage what our was being brought to us. And um it didn't occur to me to say, did someone walk the site? I assumed we wouldn't, we wouldn't be bringing it to town meeting otherwise. No one had been on the roof.
Right.
And now that they are, is when the information came out. Their, by the way, their roof quote was was spot on. The move funded for the roof will pay for the roof.
Right.
Um, the new piece, I want to be crystal, crystal clear, is for the HVAC, which was an unknown. We did not bond that out at town meeting. That was not part of the original project. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about that piece in the community. We spoke about it really, really clearly yesterday in the meeting. I know that there's another, I think someone forwarded me a news article saying, you know, I, this is what I watched your meeting, but this is what I'm reading. Can you please clarify where the 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 difference is? And I don't know where that disconnect is perfectly honest. Um but the the new cost is because the HVAC units were unknown. And that was not bonded out. Um it needs to be addressed. I will always ask now, with someone on onsite with this quote, and I will ask more detailed questions on that. Um but that's.
I was on that facility subcommittee meeting. That's not, I I would never think to ask that, and I'm a civil engineer, I never think to ask that question. I would have quite obviously assumed that if we have an estimate in front of us, it means someone's been up there and looked. That was, I did not, I just want to make sure.
I want to be clear that this was no, um, this was no omission of Leftfield. Uh so I'm confident with working with them through the process. Yes, um, so I just, here we are, and we do need HVAC units, and it is incumbent on us to address that need. Um, it would be very foolish to to potentially void a warranty, likely void a warranty, incur an extra, you know, twenty-five percent upcharge by putting it off by a year and doing it segmented. Um, we need to, you know, do this appropriately, so.
I'm just going to make a couple of quick comments, then we can move on. Um, one, I just want to make, I just, I'm not going to correct you, but the comment you made, Allison, about not wanting to wait another year, um just so everyone, the we're, this isn't a waiting period. This is, design is going through, like in other words, it takes time um for us to get even to this point to twenty twenty-six, because the design work and the specifications. So I think to what John's point was, if this administration said, you know what, we're going to just start all over again on this, we would be going back to, you know, the beginning, start line, and we would be starting this process all over again, and that would take extra time. So I think the right thing to do is to is to go forward, which is what the plan is. I do want um to make a, I guess, a comment that um in reference to one of the public comments we had from Mr. Calvin was regarding the bonding or funding of this. First thing is um the the funding of this in terms of what, if if it's approved by the um uh voters here in Marlin, um be the decision of the finance director on the town side as to how to actually fund this. That's not something the school committee or the school district gets involved in. Um, I'm not sure where the comment of the thirty-year bond came from. Um I have, I'm not sure how that works.
Yeah, I did speak with Ms. Benjamin yesterday. Um she had been asked to get, she had been asked by the media to get a per dollar, you know, per homeowner cost. Uh so she went on to the website that they use to do debt exclusions. Um she put in eight point six million dollars. Um she put it on for thirty years, calculator.
Okay.
Uh and she came up with a number, I believe, and I didn't, I read the newspaper out of it.
Yeah.
Because we had a conversation last night. She said it was fifty-seven dollars and change per per um per median household. So again, if your house is a little higher, it might be a little higher, it might be a little lower. Um but she did do it at a thirty. If, you know, if it's the, and I don't know how town meeting works, that they they vote on a term also along with the 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 cost of borrowing, the amount they want to borrow plus the term. Um or if it's just.
You know, it's usually just the approval for the principal amount, and then my understanding is the decision is by the finance director and whoever, you know, in that world decides how to actually do the.
She was explaining to me last night, um and and I had to cut her off at one point, say, Alicia, I don't understand all the
Yeah.
the the loan portion of this, the debt exclusion, that's always been on the town or the city side and never really gotten involved with it. I understand what it is and how it works. I don't know the formulas to make them, you know, six cents per thousand for this, for that.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it was sort of a legitimate question. If you're going to have an average twenty or twenty-five year roof, why are you bonding it out for thirty years? That is actually.
Ideally, we should be getting more than thirty. We should be getting thirty years out of it. MSBA will not touch a little project unless it's twenty-five to thirty years old.
So I think um to 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 Mr. Calvin's point, I think that, you know, as we move closer, we can ask our finance director. You know, it sounds like she was just responding to a general question from the media perhaps, um and we can ask for a little bit more detail on that, as to how she just, you know, how they make the decision on a capital project um as to the funding, you know, because I know for, for instance, like vehicles, you do, I think, a five year or ten, whatever. So that is a good question, and we can get this.
From asking that, um the previous time we went this go around, because two years ago, when we had multiple debt exclusions in one article, some were five, some were ten, and some were uh other year year spans, and what it's a, it's what it is, is the way it was explained to me at that point, was you bonded out for whatever the projected lifespan is. And there is like a database of this is this, this is this, this is this. So I'm assuming Alicia referenced that database of
We'll get clarification. We'll get clarification from her on that as we get closer. Uh and the only other thing I might say, mentioned it, Alan, Brian, you know, to the point that, and to Allison's point about concern about getting information out to the public, maybe we could do a, you know, an actual or, I don't know, for some, maybe some kind of a explanation or proverb to give kind of some of this, and we could put it out, either in our newsletter or it could be a standalone.
I think with a timeline would be helpful, because I think that's what people really.
I do, but I'm not so sure we can actually recreate a timeline, because there are some key people from the beginning of this that are no longer here, that we have no access to that information. But we can, we can put forward what we know.
Yeah, that's true. There was also some questions. Um again, I'm just trying to really hit head on all of the questions from the public on this that I see on social media uh around ARPA funding. Um I can tell you personally, I, you know, with previous administrations begged for us to ask for as much ARPA funding as we could. I can't say whether or not um I never really got a listing out of what, of everything that was ever asked for. Um all all I can say is that this committee and the committee before tried. Um.
Okay, um, all right, you got on that? Okay, I'm going to move on to subcommittee and liaison updates. Communication.
Yes, we're working on updating the actual school committee page. There is one folder on there called press coverage. What is that? It, it looks like was a newspaper article on the MEA strike. And why, why do we have that? That's comfortable. We have press releases of our school.
So I can, maybe we can talk about, go through it offline, because we during the, you know, the negotiations we had on the landing page, we were trying to keep up right there on the landing page. And then once we concluded negotiations, we had agreed upon contract, we moved to um I think the school committee sort of archived. So maybe there was one hole over. So maybe you and I can have a conversation with Steve, my tech, figure out where all of that should go, because we do have an archived portion of um negotiate twenty for twenty twenty-four negotiations.
Yeah, because that, that was all covered under the street press. All those communications. So I don't understand why we have the media, the outside media having a section on it, I think. If people want to see what the media is producing, they just go on newspapers.
I'm not familiar with that, so I'll have to take. I will do that.
Yeah, I would agree, Brian, that in general, I think we don't, we, we don't need to be doing that.
Oh, then I don't, I don't even familiar with, so I'll have to go back and see if, if it's, if it's literally links to media coverage, then we have maybe we can.
That's.
Yeah, maybe we could just eliminate it.
Yes, we, we uh showed the school newsletter, uh the school committee newsletter last time. Uh Alan and I are proposing that we write this communication, some newsletter, and have the chair approve it, and then we're going to release it.
I think, but I do think you're asking for subcommittees to give you.
Yes, hold on. I already sent down an email to everybody. If you're on a subcommittee, please give me a paragraph that I can put on the newsletter. So I would dump that right in there. I would, unless there was a question about that we'd have to ask people, like, can you clarify? Other than that, it's really by the various committees, not us.
I think it's great.
Did I miss anything?
No, I think we're ready to go live, right?
Yeah, the only thing that we're missing is fact page. Um we had discussed this at a couple of school committee meetings before.
Yeah.
And the final edit is, we're just.
Yeah, that should be done. That was, my muted, that was done. Um I I think last meeting, I can resend it to you, Brian. Yeah, I do. I was just making it, I wasn't sorry. I should clarify before I get pummeled. I was not editing it. I was just making it pretty and making the format and the font correct.
Thank you. All right, so you'll resend that so we can get that up?
I will, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Um uh facilities. Just, okay, so was there anything?
Um, there was a few little minor things, like the, we talked about the light over at Village. Mike was looking into that um working and getting that fixed. There was a light in the front parking lot that um there were some security footage to see how it came down, uh but that was it, that would be fixed. Um there's events we're asking to address over at the back of the parking lot at the Brown School um presented safety concern as well as. Yes, um and then uh as well as asking about working with the town to get a crosswalk in a stop sign as you exit the Brown School um after the drop off line, right? When you enter Dartmouth Road, um at the SAC meeting. And I want to say the one in October, one of the staff members had brought up, they'd been asking for it, and it was a safety concern, so I brought it back to the committee and asked for it.
Is that the one that uh comes out right next to the tower?
Yes, there's no stop sign and no crosswalk, and we have walkers and bikers that come there. Then I went back and looked. It was actually part of the site plan approval that went through the planning board, I think. Um so it was approved. I think where the disconnect is.
Approved and.
Yeah, I think where the disconnect is, is when they were doing all the striping and signage onsite. That portion of the of where that crosswalk and stop sign would be is actually a town property, not full property, so we couldn't have had our contractor put the striping and sign signage up. So Mike was going to work with um the highway department, and I believe any signage that had been approved was on the floor, but he's working on that.
Kind of interesting that a site can be approved, and then the building was signed off on and that's interesting.
I believe the official was actually brought up, uh superintendent safety advisor.
Yeah.
The chief of police, and they wanted to look into it, but there was a whole reason why they couldn't crosswalks. There's something about.
I think, I think, I think part of what we need to look at is uh if there's curb cuts or not in the, in the sidewalks, because if there's no curb, like actual curb cuts for um for accessibility, they won't, they won't stripe it. So that's something we need to look at. And I just, off the top of my head, I haven't had a chance to go walk back over there and look at it again, but I will.
That's required. So Mike, Mike, Mike had acknowledged the curb cut being a concern. Um he was going to work with.
I have an update. I have a slide up to you.
Okay. Okay.
Um, so I spoke with this up like here today.
Okay.
And he said that he had a conversation with um public safety, and they were not in favor of putting in a stop sign. He didn't know why, and I asked him to follow up on that conversation as to why they they decided, well, why they feel that that a stop sign is not needed or warranted.
If it's a site plan review, it's not.
I'm, yeah, I'm going to push back because we were given approval to build a fifty-four million dollar project contingent on this, passing aboard. We can't then choose after, no matter who you are or your title is, that we're not going to do. So site plan approval was based on this crosswalk and stop sign being there, because it's in the best interest of our students and it's safe. And I understand that a curb cut could be a problem, that could incur costs. There's, there's a multitude of issues here. But I'm going to be really firm on if it's what's safe and it's like, you can't post approval, decide you're just not going to do it's the approval. I don't know how that was missed while we opened it. I don't know where.
And I think, I think we I wasn't here, I wasn't.
I'm not blaming you.
No, I get, I get that, but I don't understand the conversations that happened.
So I think I'm going to suggest this. I think that um whoever's still working with um the OPM, because the.
Well, that's town property. It's not.
Well, whatever it is. That's where the point is that it may not be on school property.
It doesn't matter. That's what's approved by the plan. Yeah. This, the uh, but but it needs to be followed up.
So can, so what um what I can do is, um Mike and I can have a conversation. He and I can uh kind of speak from the school side of things around the safety with, I think it's one of those things where is, are people doing kind of this or not? So I can speak with uh you know, the town, with DPW, with the police, and and let's figure out who who's who's responsible and how we get there. Um because I think.
I'm going to push back and say, I think this goes back to the OPM. I mean, this is the responsibility of the OPM to have delivered a project that met the rules.
I can touch this with the OPM.
I think that's.
So, so, okay, so we'll, we can start there for sure, but I'm, I'm just saying that uh I'm, I'm all about the school safety as well, and I think if uh if the OPM or whatever, we don't go anywhere, I I'm happy to continue to push with the, with the town side to figure this out, because I mean, if we need a stop sign, we need a stop sign if we need, you know, curb. Cause I mean, if we need a stop sign, we need a stop sign if we need, you know, curb cuts, we need curb cuts. So we'll, we'll have to figure out how to get it done. So I'm, I'm committed to doing that.
The town, they need to do it, but the, the payment comes from the project. I mean, that was part of people's. Yeah, well, I mean, it was part of the project. Yeah, everything that was approved comes under the budget of the project. So that, that's, I wouldn't make a question, so.
I'd just like to point out, this is a great takeaway from the S A C meetings because that's where I heard this is a safety concern was able to bring.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Just, it's just beyond me how you can have something approved by a board. Has the authority to approve something and it just doesn't get done. So, don't understand. Um, okay, um, anything else with facilities?
That was um, what we covered.
Okay, um. Um, and then you wanted to finish your budget. Okay, so we'll do.
We haven't had another budget since our meeting two weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
No, 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 we're, we're, we're um, probably going to be having one in the next.
Okay, uh, okay, policy. Um, Allison, do you wanna give an update or you want me to or?
Go for it.
Um, policy subcommittee that um, last week, we do um, have some work ahead of us for the school committee goals, including the protocols. As well as a policy review, and I gotta go back and check. I'm not sure the policy review was part of the goals, but I, was it? Um, so I did have a conversation with um, Alicia, our field rep. Um, so I'm waiting to hear back from her. We just need to schedule a time um, where she's gonna help us, you know, to kinda go through that. Allison. Probably thinking it's a meeting for each one. We'll do protocols at one meeting and. See it at another one. Um, so we'll be following up on that. Um, and then we did have some um, discussion around the flag policy, which is still out there. We had um, done anything with that since the fall. Um, and there was some public comment at our subcommittee meeting. Um, particularly around wanting to have input, um, additional input from students and from the community. So what we decided to do is we're going to schedule a student forum and a community forum. So we'll be getting those dates out. We talked initially about February thirteenth to be the student forum, which is a Thursday night, not a school committee night. Not a school committee meeting. Um, so, yeah, um, so that would be, we'll work through that with John and um, Dr. Carlson, Dr. Carlson. On best timing and all that. And then um, we'd like to also do a community forum. I'd like to extend the invitation to the school committee if they would like to come. Um, and I was sending an email out. I'm trying to get a date for that. And then we will follow up with the recommended policy.
Jen, is it possible to do the student forum during the magic block?
That is something we're working through with.
Um, so, so I haven't had a chance to circle back on that. The magic blocks are really tied up right now. And I'd rather not um, untangle them for, for, for a student forum right now. I think the after school timeframe is, is one that would make more sense um, from what I've gleaned for input and feedback right now. So the, the magic blocks are, you know, similar to like P D, we, we, we structure them in a way that is, is already planful. And to kinda undo that is not helpful to the student experience. So um, uh, the input and feedback I got was to do it in the afternoon after school. Or early evening would be the best.
So my understanding is one out of every, however, I think there's two magic. Julia, is there two magic blocks out of every four days?
Yeah, one is for, for the academic.
One's academic, one's.
We've been using. Well, no, it's actually we've been implementing the S C L curriculums, the way founders taking place during um, one of them per month. Um, and then they get to do the clubs activities, stuff like that.
So it, it's planned, it's planful stuff. It's not, it's not like, let's hang out and have, have, have chit chat time, so. May have been the way it was before, but it's not scheduled that way now.
I just think, uh, maybe during a lunch, during lunch blocks or, or rolling during the middle to the various lunch blocks. My concern is if we have it outside of the school day, these students are so scheduled with sports, with extracurriculars. Tutoring with jobs, volunteering that we're really then limiting who can give feedback. And I think if we can do it during, you know, even a lunch, I think, what is it, three lunch blocks? If we run one each lunch block for a day, then, then, then we really are giving all students a chance. To, to speak. And there is a way to do that and still be a public meeting. You can set it up that it is. Uh, a webinar so that the public can view it, what is going on, but the students in the room are the ones having the meeting. With the school committee because there's no, as we've talked about, there's no um, requirement for public comment. During a public meeting. So it's not that the students are having a public comment, it's they're having a forum. They're getting a chance to have a two-way conversation and it's just really important, I think, to give all students a chance to do that.
John, do you wanna discuss that with Michelle?
Um, all right, you already thought. I, I can. I, I just told you what the input was, but that's fine. We can certainly, I can revisit it again. One, two, I just. Uh, I'm not, I'm not adverse to having it during the school day. I just, you know, when it's lunch period, like if they're having a forum, they're not having lunch. So I just. I just, you know, I think if we're gonna have, if we're gonna actually ask the students' opinion and listen to them and have a discussion. We need to give them a form that they can have that discussion during and not a twenty-minute like run in, run out. So that, that's only I think. But I'll certainly revisit that with Michelle and see what she thinks, if we can operationalize that. Can I get back to Jen?
Yeah, I was just gonna say though, I'm gonna actually push back a little bit because I think a couple of things. First of all, we've had three listening sessions, which were during magic block. Uh, so students were already allowed. I think this is, you know, we're responding to the adults that asked for this. Um, primarily because the, the policy subcommittee, like all subcommittees, meetings took place in during the morning during school day. Um, so I'm, you know, we're responding to that. Um, I think the, you know, natural thing to do is to ask our administration. And our administrators in the building and their superintendent for what their recommendation is, this is the recommendation. Um, I have to, you know, believe and, you know, trust that it's, they're, you know, doing what makes sense. Um, I do think a lunch is to, because I just, I am worried about the time. I don't want it to be shortened. Um, so I think, you know, I think, I think, you know, we go with what the recommendation of the administration is. But we can certainly make sure that we're communicating to students through the administration. Um, the myriad of other ways that they can be in touch with us. You know, they can come to public comment, certainly they can email, call us. You know, we will make ourselves available if they're unable to do it, you know, right after school. And I do think, probably if I'm wrong, John, if we do something sort of. Right after school, you know, there is a black period between, uh, you know, after school activities starting a little bit later. So they could at least drop in and um, sort of make themselves known, even if they have to go.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was the thought process that if students are, are, are passionate about um, making the voices known. That they're gonna make the time to do that and to do it right after school, um, before they get into their, you know, maybe jobs or homework or athletics and stuff like that. That there may be a window to, to make that happen. But we, we can, again, we can talk about that and uh, and uh, make it make sense for, for the, for the. Greater good, for sure.
Jen, Jen, is, is there, you mentioned, is there a recommendation from the administration on the flag policy?
No, uh, cause typically what happens is there was a request for a policy from the administration. And then it's up to us as the committee to, to draft it, which I did with, you know, doing research in other school districts, talking to M A C, talking to our attorneys, that's.
And what happens when there's a change in the administration? How is that handled, right? It was the previous administration or superintendent.
No, it was the principal. Who asked for this, who's still the current principal.
And even though we, we don't, we didn't have a policy, so when we're asked what the policy is, we have to create one.
This was a response to S J C case that came out of Boston. And so about a year ago, there's this uh, a case that came out of Austin and went all the way to the Supreme Court. Um, and what it was, was Boston City Hall had a program where you could appeal to have a flag put up. And the city council would approve it and it would run for whatever the grant was. And then a group applied. It was denied. The council didn't feel, it was broken. They denied it. They took it all the way to the S G C. And what came back is that, you know, they took it to the U S.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So they, what came back was they said, if it, if your flag pole is a representation. Of free speech, then all needs all. No matter who comes forth, if it's something that you're morally opposed to. If it's, say, a Nazi flag or something like that, you can't say no. Yes to all is yes to all. No to all is no to all. There's no. The only way to do it is if you have this policy that says. A policy that says the pole is an expression of the body that governs. That's the only way.
Yeah, it's, it's a bit.
Yeah, but so.
So he's saying now that every district will have a policy because of his judgment? So those that don't do, why would they not?
They perhaps open themselves up to.
Well, it has become an issue, right? So it, it, there are districts out there that this has not been an issue. Um, it was brought to us with a request, um, and there continues to be concern by people in the community. Um, around this policy. And so we. I believe, I'm only one person, believe we have an obligation to create a policy that will meet the needs of our community.
And just a caveat, the town passed a flag policy about five months ago and the reason was their attorney came to them following this case and said. You need to have a policy. And so they passed a policy. The unfortunate piece is in our town, their policy says on all municipal buildings, except schools. Therefore leaving it for us to have to do one separately. Many, many municipalities have one for the whole municipality. But because it was passed with that loophole, we now are in this predicament that we also.
Okay, so that'll address the flag pole outside on the grounds, right?
It'll be whatever we decide.
Yeah.
Well, it has to at least, from what you're just saying, it sounds like that you have to have that addressed, right? The flag pole in front of the school.
Any.
Flags on, on school property.
So it does represent some. It's gonna have banners and all, and other.
Well, whatever we did, whatever the. But, you know, so it may be the well of committee to just have one flag, well, but the recommendation is based on the Supreme Court case that it's all.
I guess I'm just trying to come up to speed, because as Allison was saying, you know, a lot of times around the community, you get asked questions, it's just stat, you know, updates. And I didn't realize we were at the point where we're going to have a flag policy. We're just trying to figure out what it's going to be versus. We're not sure if we're going to have a flag policy yet or not, depending upon, there's other, maybe other ways to manage this. But, but what I'm hearing is that train has left the station.
We were asked, so we were asked what the policy is, we have to, if we don't have one, we have to create one.
Well.
And so if any, and, and is that request from who, Allison? Just an administrator, any administrator or who, who?
Yeah, I think it was uh, Michelle at the time.
I, I don't need to know who, I'm just curious, like, it's good to know this, right? If we're asked, we have to provide one, but is that anybody can ask and we have to react to that?
No, I don't, yeah, I don't know. I'm not even sure, I'll necessarily that that is the case, we can get clarification on that. But I think it's good practice if you have administration that comes and asks for help and guidance in the form of a policy. And this is not a one-off. This is, this is a result of, you know, a Supreme Court case and this is happening in most municipalities. Not all school districts, but most municipalities. Um, so what will hap, what is happening in subcommittee, we're doing the work. We will come forward with a recommended policy. It will be up to the entire committee to decide whether that's, that's approved. Or whether that's changed or it's not approved, that'll be ultimately up to this committee to decide.
Interestingly, I know we've mentioned this before, there was not much, there, there was really an area discussion when it was a town. The town was coming up with their policy, which. I.
It's a different situation because we, the town's not dealing with students and classrooms and education and et cetera, et cetera. That's, that's why there's no difference. There's, it's a different conversation. So that's, you know, all, all the feedback I've.
I mean, there's plenty of community members that have come forward about our policies. So I, I, I think they're.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to speak to why, why it was an issue at the town hall and why it's a different issue in the school, so, yeah.
But I, I, I'm disagreeing. I see it as, as similar. Um, it's the same community.
And it could become an issue at some point. It hasn't.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
No, so, so ma- maybe I, maybe I didn't clarify. I think the difference is when you talk about. Say, students saying, I wanna be represented by the flags that hang out. You don't have that at the town hall. You don't have that at the town level saying, I wanna make sure there's banners at Abbott Hall. There's, there's things that represent who I am hanging somewhere. You have that in schools. That's the difference. That, that's, that's the fundamental difference. There's a flag pole and there's a flag and banners. In my opinion, separate from, from the flag pole. But we'll see what the policy is recommended and we'll go that route and then I'll.
Just to be clear, I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't manage it, right? But we met, you know, do we have a cell phone policy, for example? We don't. That's being managed though, right?
Yeah.
So I guess I'm just, I'm still a little confused as to when we, when you need a policy and when you don't. And it sounds like part of it is somewhat asking for it. And us deciding that we need to provide that guidance. But I, I still, the reason I'm asking this is, I also think there's. A large part of our community that is questioning whether we do need a flag policy still. So to me, it's just we're. That part isn't even agreed upon, I think, with the five of us and what we're communicating with the, with the community, right? I, I'd like to say to the community, you know, we're past the point of whether we're going to have a policy or not. The decision now is just crafting that in a way with the appropriate people that makes sense. And I guess that's the kind of thing we need to. Have people understand that I don't think many town residents would know that right now, to be quite honest.
No, I understand, which is part of why policy, so this is the job of the policy subcommittee, right? Is to go forward. This committee can decide not to, to, to improve it, then you can decide to change it, then you can decide wherever it wants. The policy subcommittee is going through this process based on talking, research, talking to attorney and in this case, well, in all cases, but. Especially in this case, getting input and allowing the opportunity for um, for, for the community, for sure. Um, at large and in particular the students. Um, and in even more in particular at the high school, students to be able to give feedback. And then all of that will come to the committee, you know, in a package to say, this is what we recommend. And then we'll be up to the committee to decide what needs to do.
To talk about some policy, a lot of the things you said, like cell phone policy, you'll find out the student handles. That's where we put it. And then the handbooks are approved by the school committee. So for the elementary schools, they have certain. They have their own cell phone policy, which we approve. Same thing for middle school or the high school.
Good. We also have a technology pop policy that.
Yeah, attendance policy, for instance, we do have a sort of a generic, I don't wanna say generic, a, a narrative around attendance and what's intended. But then in the sort of the granular level of how that's. And that is the extension of this work also. So, all right, all right, so that'll be part of the long, long presentation there. Um, and what I'm missing. Anything? No, those are all the subcommittees. Um, CPAP, any update on CPAP?
Yeah, I mean.
Metco.
I gave an update last time.
Yeah, so Metco, I'm gonna work with Al and Kasia to get together again, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, just so we can um, close that gap a little bit. And then we didn't have a safety committee again. Um, we have one scheduled, we, we skipped February because of um, initial vacation. But we'll have one in March. I just wanna share with this committee that it's something that I will be bringing that to that committee. Which also kinda overlaps with uh, facilities is, uh, wanna look at our A E Ds in the district. Um, and uh, right now there, we have A E Ds everywhere. I wanna make sure that we have their operative. That we have an inventory that I'd like to work with the town to see if we have a way to connect them to um. The, the dispatch system so that when someone opens the case and we need an A E D that it rings the dispatch right away. So I had that, those preliminary conversations, um, cause I think that's a, that's a safety situation. Um. Um, in our building, I realized that there's not an A E D down the town side. So I've had that conversation with Thatcher already. Um, he's looking. To, to add an A E D there. So I just wanna have that conversation just cause um, one, it's important to. Uh, there's some, i- i- it ties into safety and then there's some further discussions that go along with A E D that I don't wanna talk about in public. Cause it's a safety thing, but I just wanna um, let you know that when I, when we hold the next um, subcommittee, that will be on, there'll be some other discussions about. Dispatch related um, communications, so.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Um, okay, new business. Anyone have any new business? Fine.
I saw in the news that Boston Public Schools had immigration officers going in and removing students. I suspect they're gonna hit the big cities like Fall River, Worcester. I suspect they're gonna hit the big cities like Fall River, Worcester, Springfield, those places first, but. Have you given any kind of, um, direction to teachers and principals that if a ICE agent walks into your building? What, want them to do and how to proceed forward with them? Or have you thought about that? Cause I think it's possible they could come here, highly unlikely, but I, you never know. So I think it'd be a good idea, we have some sort of parking points for the principals and the teachers. John, do you think you've got something like that?
So what I would say is, um, I would, I would address ICE agents or anyone else that comes to the schools, any, the way, the same way we do with anyone that shows up at the school. We ask, you know, why they're there, we scan their I Ds, we talk about why they're at the building, and then we have discussions, um. I don't foresee that occurring in Marblehead, I think you're right, I think we're gonna hit New York, Boston, San Francisco, all the big cities, um. Um, but we should have that discussion, I, it's not, you know, priority-wise, it's probably in the, you know, somewhere in the middle, um, and that's just, that's a new. New kind of thing that just kinda popped up, um, but we'll definitely have those conversations so we can be prepared and, um. Address them if and when it happens, for sure, so I, I, I appreciate you bringing that up, Brian, but we'll, we'll, we'll do that internally and, uh. And have a plan in place if, if it does occur.
John, I suggest, um, also probably be checked to, to Liz, our counsel.
Yeah, yeah.
Give some advice from her as to, I mean, basically, it's how would you be dealing with any kind of law enforcement officer coming into a building?
Yep.
I think that, I think we should just let him come back and report back on how that, what, you know, what the recommendation is, um. And then how you, how and what you'd be communicating to the, to the, to the building administration, building staff, uh, that would be great. Yeah, I would also, um, make a note that, um, somebody anonymously put in, there's a Q and A in this webinar format. A question about that, it was an anonymous post-question, um, I don't, we're not normally gonna respond, we don't respond to dialogue, I'm just gonna answer to that person offline. Um, directly, so hopefully the person is, is still on and, and, and heard that result and that we'll, um, we'll hear back from Superintendent Robert.
Yes, and, um, ab- absolutely, um, if you could. Reach out to our attorney, um, id- ideally tomorrow, because this, you know, has been starting. And if you could ask just a couple of specific questions, um, two I would want answered is. If they do not have a judicial warrant, do you have to let them in the building, but, and how would they deal with that? And if any student is in a nurse's office, I believe that counts as a clinical setting and.
There's all sorts of stuff going on.
But I'm just asking, please to get very specific, cause that's a liability on us, if we aren't following those very, very specific. And she'll give her, I'm sure she will give that.
Okay.
I will find that out, I'll report back.
I'm gonna respond to this person, um, this person of, of, uh, online. Okay, any other new business? Allison, anything? She's a, oh, Allison? Are you allowed to talk? There you go, Allison, sorry, I thought you were coming.
I had to switch to my phone because my laptop died, I'm, I'm at my mom's, cause she's had surgery, so I apologize, no, no more, thank you.
Okay, alright, I am going to, I'm gonna actually remote even panelists. Okay, go ahead.
Um, you can answer this offline, but I'm just wondering, uh, when we can expect to have this student risk assessment presentation? I know that we typically have that in the second half of the year, um, when we'll be having that and what grade levels. You, you get happy to have a level of that offline, so.
Okay.
Yes.
What, the student risk assessment? Um, we'll fight, we'll work on that offline, okay, um, any other new, um. Okay, I'm gonna call for adjourn, um, yeah, call for a vote for adjournment, motion I named some, Sarah, second. Second by Brian and both of, no wings. By Noda, Sarah Fox, Allison Taylor.
In favor.
Chapter in favor, Glenn Zero, adjourned at seven fifteen six.
Thank you.
Something got sent to us and it said that we're supposed, it was just like. It's like, it was like just this update on something, it doesn't matter if you say in favor, but we all were like. It was kinda just this like.
You mean it's like a poll.
Matter, in favor, too, to me, actually, I think in favor probably is better, cause if you say yeah, you're a.
Favor sounds like a positive.
Yeah, it just, it was just really interesting that, it just came out and I was like, oh, that's, yeah.
I personally will. Been my understanding of.